It's five thirty. We'll open the meeting. The secretary could make note of the call. We do have a forum at present time. Is there a motion to adopt this evening's agenda for our special meeting?
So.
Motion by Zowar. Is there a second?
Second.
Apple has got the second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. We have our city attorney that has joined us via Zoom. There was an agenda item on our regular meeting on Monday night regarding the natural gas powers authority ordinance. I would like to bring it up as part of the agenda. So I think we'll start with that, have a discussion on that. No action will be taken on that ordinance tonight. It's just strictly a discussion item and bring the council up to date as to where we're at with that. And our city attorney has been involved in that as well. So maybe I'll start by giving you a little bit of a background. I discussed this before in some of our city council meetings. And it appears that, you know, it was dying for a lack of interest among communities. But, you know, in the last month or since our last meeting, some of the economic development directors from the communities that have been involved have met with some of their elected representatives from their cities. And there was a joint Zoom call, and there was some interest at least out there from six of the eight communities. So Northwestern Energy arranged for a roundtable meeting in person in Huron on April 1st. And six of those eight communities again were representative, and I didn't participate in that. And, you know, the discussion was, I think, from the majority of the communities there, that they would like at least to get to the point that feasibility study was done to see whether or not this is possible. And they were going to explore funding for the feasibility study. There's potentially federal grant money that's available, and also some of the economic development directors are going to reach out to the governor's office of economic development to see if some additional funding was available through that source, so that there would be a minimum amount of money that would be asked from these communities to do the feasibility study. So Miller was represented there, and they had city folks there. And their city attorney had drafted a very limited ordinance, you know, just limiting, you know, the city's action to a feasibility study. But there was an issue with the joint powers agreement and what was proposed. It was a lot broader than I think what their city attorney is comfortable with. And when Erin reviewed it, what she is comfortable with and what I'm comfortable with. What we want to do is get this to the point where feasibility can be done. And that all of the city's liability or potential dollar amount to this would be any participation that they would choose if they're required to pay for the feasibility study, nothing beyond that. And I don't know if the feasibility study shows that this thing is going to work. Sisudan still would have a choice on a future date whether or not it would want to potentially bring natural gas to our community. It could be such a thing that Sisudan may bob out and there may be another community that it makes more sense for natural gas to come through. I guess the feasibility study, you know, would tell us that. And I guess, you know, I think our proposed ordinance indicates that potentially I would be appointed to serve on this board if we so choose to do that. And I guess I would be willing to do that at no cost to the city of Sisudan. I wouldn't expect if I would have to travel to different meetings or whatever, I'd do that on my own dime. So it's just to see whether or not this is going to be feasible. So that's the point of it. So Erin, if you could add anything to what my comments are from a legal perspective after you consulted with Miller's city attorney, please.
Yes, so Terry basically hit the points that were at issue for the two of us and I think some other city attorneys. Even with the narrow ordinance that we were contemplating presenting to you at the meeting for passage, for first reading, once it basically adopted the joint powers agreement, the whole, once you get into that joint powers agreement, the language didn't necessarily limit the scope simply to that feasibility study. And so what we'd like to do is to revise the joint powers agreement so that that allows us to do the narrow adoption of the ordinance and then from there have a joint powers agreement that doesn't put anything else on the line for the cities that would join under it until such time as more steps were taken by the various different city councils. So what we had talked about was to have another maybe Zoom meeting amongst all the interested municipalities and all of the city attorneys and come up with a plan on how to get that joint powers agreement revised and back to the natural gas company to see if they're willing to accept those revisions or have a conversation with them about what we'd like to revise and see if they're even open to it. I don't think it makes sense for us to put a lot of time and energy into revising that. If that's the, their point is to get people to bite off more than what they want to in the beginning. So there's just a little bit that needs to be done there before we decide anything, just for us to feel a little bit more comfortable.
Well, maybe if there's some questions, I kind of want a general feel from, you know, how the council feels about that approach. You know, I guess I need to have a little bit of consensus here to see whether or not, you know, there's some interest in at least proceeding to the point of a very limited joint powers agreement and joining in potentially, you know, this nonprofit entity that would be set up by Natural Gas Authority. It wouldn't involve Northwestern Public Service at this point. They're strictly a consultant. A decision would be made later on as to whether or not, if it was feasible, that they would be hired by the nonprofit entity being formed to actually operate the business or contract operate the business. It would be a separate entity. It wouldn't be Northwestern Energy. It would be a separate entity, Natural Gas Authority, but it would be managed by a professional firm that is in that business. That's the concept. So what's, any comments or questions from the council regarding this? Paul?
I got one question. I think the city should pay you, pay for your mileage and your bills. Which I think they should, if you're going to be crap ass.
If I don't submit the bill, they don't have to.
Well, you better.
Anyway, we can approach that later on.
Okay.
I guess, you know, what I would like to do is it seems like the economic development director from Miller seems to be the most outgoing in proceeding with this. And she's offered to reach out to the governor's office of economic development. I think I'll send her an email tomorrow and tell her we had a discussion. And then I guess I feel our next step would be to arrange a Zoom call among some of the same, you know, city representatives. But also to include Erin, our city attorney, and perhaps Miller's city attorney to get at least a couple of city attorneys' perspective of the need for the, because it seems like Miller has gone a little bit farther with this and Erin has been a little bit more involved. I think they've been a little more involved in it to this point from what I can understand compared to some of the other cities. I don't know if we necessarily need to involve a city attorney from each of the cities unless Erin feels it's necessary.
I think that just comes down to what municipalities want to kind of like develop for the revision of the contract. You know, if I'm involved, then of course Sisudan's going to be putting it, Lindsey's involved, and Miller's going to be putting it. It may be for the benefit of other municipalities. I don't expect those legal fees are going to be that much.
But it's kind of to the point that, you know, if this thing is going to get off the ground somehow as to keep moving along, I don't intend to be the leader in this effort. But I guess I committed there at the meeting at least anyway that I would bring it up to our council and try to get it to the point where at least, you know, we could get the feasibility study done with. So I want to follow my commitment that I made to that group on April 1st in Huron.
I think that'd be a good idea. That way a person knows, you know.
Okay, anything else to add here? And I'll reach out to and see what happens and we'll inform you, you know, of an upcoming Zoom meeting. I don't want to do another personal meeting somewhere. We gotta do this via Zoom and see if it goes any farther.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, see you.
Okay, I guess the primary reason for the meeting tonight is to canvass the votes for the April 12th, 2021 election.
I just realized that on the agenda it says April 12th. It was actually April 13th.
April 13th, I'm sorry, April 13th, 2021 election, Tuesday. So. And I guess generally what we've done in the past, and it kind of depended whether there was more than one position this year that was up for reelection in the past, you know, we just certified the results of the election. But I think the best way for us to do this is to take separate action on canvassing the vote for each of the elections in each of the wards. That way that the councilman that were involved in that particular ward, they can abstain from the certification. And likewise, then they can vote for the certification in the ward that they represent. It's just a better, cleaner way of doing that, and it ensures a majority of the council members can cast their vote for the certification. So Amber, maybe you could take us through the process here a little bit too as well?
Okay, yeah. So the canvassing consists of opening, opening the poll book and satisfying yourself that the record of votes is accurate. So what's included in the poll book is a listing of names of all the voters for each ward, and then at the back is a tally of the votes from each ward. So you just have to, you know, look through it and satisfy yourselves that that is all accurate according to what the election workers have reported. And then it's just a matter of making a motion and a second to approve the results. Something that's a little bit maybe unique, we don't always have these situations, is that voters have the ability to vote a provisional ballot. There are instances where someone comes to vote and they aren't on the voter registration list, and they feel that they should be on that voter registration list. So there may have been an error somewhere where their, where their registration didn't get updated in the system or didn't get submitted to the county auditor or whatever the case may be. So they have the option to vote a provisional ballot. Those ballots don't get counted the night of the election because I then have to do research to determine whether those are legal ballots that can be counted. So there were two provisional ballots that were cast in Ward 1. I determined that one of them can be counted. So there was a counting board appointed this afternoon, and they counted that one ballot. So there will be one additional vote that gets added to the tally that's reported in the poll book.
Okay, so we opened up the poll book, and I think we can give the council an opportunity if everyone wants to look at the poll book, what it'll show is strictly a list of names of voters, you know, who participated in the election. I guess, you know, we can circulate that around the room and go through a couple other agenda items while it's being circulated. If you want to do it that way, that gives everybody an opportunity to kind of see the list of voters. Is that okay?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, start with here on this side of the room. Paul, circulate through. Okay, in conjunction with the election, we did have three election workers, and we set a rate for them. Each of them will be paid $224 for their services, serving as election workers. They were Donna Cordy, Yvonne Hippen, and Diane Lurkey. Is there a motion to approve payment for those services? A motion by Zowar. Is there a second?
I'll second this.
Second by Stapleton. Discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Ellen Liptis is with us tonight, and she does, as she mentioned, on Monday evening have a candidate hire on a part-time basis. So Ellen, if you could bring us up to date on that.
I would like to hire Dustin Upson. He sings Walt for the Position. I did get ahold of a couple of the references. And everybody says he would be good.
Okay. And what are you proposing for a starting wage rate then?
$13.97.
Yes, are there any questions for Ellen? If not, we'll entertain a motion that we hire Dustin Upson at, for a part-time basis at $13.97 per hour.
Who made that motion?
We got a motion by Zowar for the hire. We got a second by Just. Discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. At our meeting on Monday night, we decided to purchase a boom truck from Rick Royan. And we do have an older boom truck that should no longer be needed by the city. It's a 1989 Ford F-476. We could have a motion to declare that a surplus, and then we will appoint an appraisal board. And I guess in conjunction with that, then, if we can get this appraised, we do have a lot next to the old city hall. We could authorize bids at our main meeting then for both the truck and at least that block, you know, so we can proceed with turning maybe some of the surplus property into cash. So was there a motion then to declare the 89 Ford F-476? We got a motion by Apple. Is there a second?
I'll check.
Seconded by Wiglinger.
I'm sorry, I haven't seen this.
Okay, sorry. Go ahead. I have to ask you a question. We're multitasking here. Go ahead and ask the question.
If there are corrections that need to be made to the voter registration board, then that needs to, I mean, we need to handle that. Okay.
All right.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch the, who made the motion?
We had a motion by Apple, and a second by Wiglinger to declare the truck surplus. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. And I guess I would like to appoint Lee, you kind of were involved the last round, I guess, in some of the valuations. And Paul and Joe, if you could be the appraisal board for the truck?
Yes, okay, sure.
And we'll need a number on that, you know, by, what date, Amber?
I don't know. It's not in my head. I have to, it would have to be published two weeks before our regular meetings, so.
In the next, in the next week or so?
Next Thursday, I think, probably.
Okay, do we have, did we vote yet on that? Kind of getting, do we have a vote?
We got a motion by Apple, a second by Wiglinger.
Discussion?
You can vote.
Okay. And all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Okay, we have representatives here on Monday evening for the Tackawood Living Center. Gary had indicated what the issues are as far as the water shut offs are concerned. It appears that some digging work will need to be done, and two water shut offs will need to be installed in order for that to be shut off properly. As you may recall, a number of years ago, you know, the city did make a donation to the Tackawood Living Center, I think, for $10,000 when they were looking at some major improvement there. And we had set aside some money, you know, for economic development and that type of thing, and we dispersed from that fund at that particular time, you know, to assist in their efforts. I guess they are a crucial business within our community, and they've struggled financially as indicated by the management there. It's improved, but yet, at the same token, you know, they're trying every way that they can, you know, to keep the service in our community and try to reduce their costs as much as possible. You know, they did receive some COVID funding and that type of thing to be able to make some improvements to their facility. And there's also a foundation in place to try to continue to make improvements. But I'm very familiar with the cash flow of the business, and when you take a look at it, it's hard to, you know, even break even. And the goal is so that the loss isn't any greater than what the depreciation is, so that there's not a cash outflow. And the hope is that there's enough donations that come in and assistance that they can make capital improvements without having to borrow money because there's, there's not enough cash flow to provide for any debt service. So I guess, you know, if the city would see fit in this particular case, you know, to take care of that water hookup, you know, it's your decision. But I'm giving you the best information I have available in addition to what the representatives gave you on Monday evening. But we need to take formal action on that, and I guess, you know, they would, they would need to hire, you know, basically the contractor. They would turn the bill over to the city for payment. And that's the way it would work. We wouldn't, we wouldn't hire the contractor. So any questions or is there action by the council regarding that request?
I'll so move to go ahead.
Move to, that the city reimbursed you Tackawood Living Center for the cost of the water shut off repairs that need to be done to the main.
I'll second that.
Motion by Stapleton and seconded by Wiglinger. Discussion?
We have no idea what that bill's going to be though, you know, I mean.
No.
I mean, just so it doesn't get way out of hand since, you know.
You know, Gary estimated, you know, it could be a couple thousand bucks.
Do you think we should allow them to get an estimate first and then kind of?
I guess we can make that request.
You know, just, I mean, I can see it coming in really high just because they know the bill's going to be paid by the city just to keep them.
I would think they'd probably hire Doug because he kind of has an idea where they're going to be, and I think he wouldn't rip anyone off.
Yeah, I can reach out to them and tell them, you know, to get an estimate and that they should convey it to city hall.
Just to keep them in check a little bit.
I'll do that. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motion carries. Okay, at an earlier city council meeting, we had discussed the city potentially participating in matching funding for a feasibility study for a recreation center here in the community. And we had contact from Grove South Tota who was involved in the project as well and is investigating the costs of potential feasibility study. And I guess, you know, now they feel that they can get a feasibility study done for less than $10,000. So I think what the request is, is they're wondering if the city is willing to foot the entire bill versus it being matching funded. I guess I think the intent of the original motion is that, you know, the city be somewhat in the neighborhood of a 50% participant in it by virtue when you look at matching funding. But they're making the request, and they want the city council to consider that. So I'm throwing it out there.
I think it should stay matching itself.
Brittany, you're involved. I think you're on that committee. Can you provide any insight on that as well?
You know, we haven't, we've had one meeting since then, and then with Ashley Dean, we haven't had a meeting since. So I know that when we discussed that, you know, we had agreed to pay the $10,000, $10,000 matching. So if it's less than $10,000.
Other thoughts? Joel, you already expressed.
Fine, yeah, I figured it'd stay matching, I think.
That's what we started out with, wasn't it, matching fund?
Yeah, I don't know if any, Brittany, you know, if any work has been done? Have they reached out to any other organizations? Have searched any brands? You know, has a tribe, tribe been approached on this?
Lori has been working on some of that. If you just give me a second, I'll hold my line. I think the last email from yesterday, it looks like they were discussing a few other consultants to look at, and so I don't know. We haven't met, like I said, in the last couple of months, probably, since we're at that meeting that, without meeting that. So I'm not sure what's happening behind the scenes, I guess, any legal information. We have another meeting coming up, the end of April, beginning of May.
So right now, what we've committed to do is match funding. So in order for us to change that, I guess, a motion would be necessary to pay the entire bill or the feasibility study up to $10,000. Probably that would be, you know, an amendment to the original motion, I guess, so, but you know.
Can I ask who contacted you about that?
Who contacted us?
I talked to Lori Moore. Sorry, I didn't know that was coming. A little bit more information.
We just phoned out.
I think it was just yesterday that I talked to her, so. And I, and I just said, we have to have a special meeting so I can, yeah, bring it up then.
Barely in the nick of the time to get it in the agenda so we could post it. So I'll wait just a minute or two to see if there's a motion out there to change it.
I guess if you don't want me to make any motions.
What's that? It's up to you. You can.
I, I wouldn't expect, you know, that if your committee isn't even going to be meeting until maybe the next couple of weeks, then I would doubt that you would be moving forward on a feasibility study before our main meeting, right? Is it something we can discuss next month? Well, right, that's what I'm saying. Why would you even table that?
I think it would be better just, you know, we won't take any action tonight. We'll put it on the agenda again for our main meeting, and now you know that a request was made by one of your committee members for the city to consider it today. And you can have a discussion with them.
Sounds good. Let's, let's see.
Okay. I guess just today, we got a notice from the municipal league, and this was a discussion too at our Monday meeting, you know, regarding code enforcement. They do have, you know, code enforcement training scheduled for May 12th and 13th. And since, you know, it is something that we're considering, it appears from the agenda here that it could be beneficial for the representatives of the city maybe to attend this. But the registration is due prior to our next meeting, so I thought I'd bring it up on the agenda here so that at least, you know, we can, if we've got some idea at least whether or not we do it, we would have on the agenda at the meeting to authorize the travel. we would have on the agenda at the meeting to authorize the travel expense. But if we've got some consensus here that somebody may be willing to attend this, you know, we could perhaps get the registration in and then authorize the travel expense, you know, at our main meeting. So is somebody, it's probably not going to work for me, but is there somebody on the city council that has an interest and may be attending this training? Get some general background.
I have interest, it's just coming up fairly fast. So I believe in that.
Yeah, I agree.
Double check with kids.
Okay, well, let us know if you've got some interest. And then if we do have council members' interest, I guess I want to read from the council. I don't think if we've got council people that are interested in attending, I don't think we'll have any problem authorizing the travel expenses that are immediately. Okay, well, let us know at City Hall whether or not you're interested in attending. Because I think May 1st is the registration deadline for reduced dollar amount, I think. Okay, do you have any other details, Brittany, regarding the citywide cleanup? I know that you invited the community out into areas.
Yeah, I did bring the map with me today. But I don't know if you guys are planning on attending. But we do have eight areas kind of mapped out from Eighth Avenue West to Eighth Avenue East over by where the Napa was. And then it's down like behind St. Peters over there to do cleanup at 2:00. I would expect it probably only lasts a few hours. And we have about 85 people that have confirmed with me that they are coming. I expect there'll be more people that have it in time. So we'll start at 2:00. Each area will have a lead. And that lead will either be the mayor in one area and the rest will be either a deputy or a city officer. So again, it's a cops, kids, and community event. We have 4H, the Boy Scouts, and some church group kids coming. So if you guys would like to attend, I think that'd be a good thing for our community. Can I hear this?
I don't think so. We'll just have to have maps available by then. But you have a, what, is that time? You know, that you think things will wrap up? Or what's your best call?
I would think within a few hours. I mean, I will stay down there till everything comes back and tells me that everything is done. But I would imagine anywhere from two to three hours.
So maybe a two to five timeframe unless they wrap up a little earlier.
I would think some areas are maybe a little bit.
Some areas are going to be more challenging.
What are you kind of trying to hit like?
So what is the plan generally? To go down the alleys, along the streets, boulevards, but not to go on anybody's yard?
I was wondering if you're going to be.
I mean, it's reachable, I think, probably, but not venturing up into people's doorways or, you know, obviously stuff like that. But yeah, public doorways is.
Maybe not no more than 10 foot from the road?
Okay, we're good. We'll see how that turns out. It sounds like the weather forecast, Sunday's going to be the best weather of the whole week. So I think we'll be lucky.
Don't worry about that.
Lunch at the party?
They, yeah, I think we'll do, people can grab Rosalie's. And then live water, I think people can kind of grab that maybe before they leave. Especially if they want to drive up to the area they're in versus walking over there, they may not like to come back out here. So I think that should be that's first.
So I guess the other agenda, I just wanted to guess to take a look at that. I guess then, I guess moving on to, you know, the official canvas and action by the council. We'll take action on Ward 1, Elderman first. And Lee, you abstain from voting on this certification. The official results for Ward 1 were Rochelle Schultz, 39, votes, Lee Sober, 103 votes. Is there a motion to certify the results, Ward 1 Elderman? Motion by Apple, is there a second?
I'll give it to you.
Seconded by Just, any discussion? Does this require a roll call vote or is it an act of nature? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motions carries. Each of you will have to sign this official canvas here. So we'll circulate this and where your signature is. For Ward 2, Elderman, the official results of the election are Connie Randolph, 38 votes, Herman Wiglinger, 31 votes. Is there a motion to certify the Ward 2 Elderman election results?
I'll make that.
Can't do that. Herman abstained.
I'll so who?
Motion by Stapleton, seconded by Sober, discussion? Discussion, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both motions carry. Herman abstained from the vote on that. And Lee abstained from the vote on Ward 1. So we'll have that in the council as well. So any other, any other items that need to come before the council this evening? Again, we'll need the signatures from individuals certifying votes of the official election results. So Herman, you'll be signing at Ward 1 here. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? By Just, is there a second? By Apple, discussion? All in favor of the motion, aye.
Aye.
Both, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
This livestream is brought to you by Dakota Pond and Thrift for all your pond needs, countryside assistance, living, and memory care in Rosalt, where your family is our family. First Savings Bank of Sisseton. Use our online banking to save you time. Still some service in Sisseton with Marathon Fuels, dry state water in Sisseton for all your water needs. Water softeners at Reverse Osmosis right here in Sisseton. And of course, the Sisseton Courier, where we do more than the weekly newspaper. Thanks for watching and have a great day.